Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Board of Commissioners City Hall Regular Meeting, November 18th, 2025, 4:30 p.m. We're going to start out with a invocation, pledge allegiance, and I'll turn it over to Commissioner Sue Perigin.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Tonight, we have a special guest that's going to bless our meeting here tonight. His name is Chaplain Andy Toops, and he was, has been a police chaplain or an emergency response chaplain for 40 years. So before he prays for us, I'd like for him to just say a few words about what exactly does that mean and what does he do. But prior to being retired, he was the pastor over at the Lutheran Church on Nashville Road. Great, great organization. So, Andy Toops, thank you.
A lot of what we do is dealing with officers one-on-one and being available to our officers for any kind of special needs that they might have, and our dispatchers and everybody else. We're available 24/7, 365 days out of the year. All four of us are volunteers. We do almost all of the next-of-kin notifications for the police department when there's a fatality wreck or a shooting or something of that nature. We try to work as best we can with all the other agencies in town. If they're shorthanded, or if we're shorthanded, we rely on their help, too, with the Sheriff's Department and WKU Police and the Fire Department. We try to work together with everybody to do the best we can to give the best service we can give to our community. Also, very much engaged with the coroner's office. We were able to help them considerably during the tornado because those guys, I think, they kind of got forgotten after all, everything was said and done. They were sitting over there with a lot of trauma flipped on top of them, and we got to spend some good time with them as well. So, we are here and available for the community. We're available to anybody who needs us. So, we work through the police department, but we are available to everybody. Ready? Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight. We thank you for the rain that we received today. We thank you for all the blessings that you bring into this community. There are so many good people here, Lord, and you have brought them to the right place. So many more are coming in, and we thank you for them. Lord, we ask that you would be with those in our community who are struggling, with the homeless, with those who are food insecure, for all the people that are just having a tough time right now. Lord, give us wisdom and knowledge and to come up with the best ways to take good care of each other in this community, to encourage each other in everything that we do. And, Lord, when we do have differences, to settle them in a way that brings honor and glory to you. Watch over our emergency services people, especially, we ask that you would be with our dispatchers. It's a big job for them, Lord, and we ask that you would watch over them especially. We ask this all in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain Andy. Thank you, Sue. Mrs. Jackson, will you please provide a roll call?
Commissioner Beasley Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Perigin.
Here.
Commissioner Bailey.
Mayor Alcott.
Mr. Mizel, this time, do you have remarks?
I have a couple of awards I want to, or actually, one award and another item I'd like to mention. First of all, our Bowling Green Parks and Rec and our Warren County Parks and Rec collaborated and recently were awarded the, an award at our Kentucky Recreation and Parks Society State Conference. They were awarded just for our, the category, the population category, for their collaborative work, Harvest Fest, Adaptive Sports, Trails and Playgrounds, everything that they do side-by-side throughout the year, just providing outstanding recreational opportunities to our citizens of both Warren County, Bowling Green and Warren County. So, here's the teamwork, community, and the power of parks. Just imagine if we didn't have any parks, what our, our community would be like. So, it's hard to imagine. So, thank you. Congratulations. If Cameron Levis is here, Brent Belcher, please stand up. Chris Comer is probably not here. Chris is the...
Cameron, Brent.
Yeah, Cameron, Brent.
Brent.
Chris Comer, our Warren County Parks Director, played a part in this as well. So, it was great teamwork. So, congratulations to both parks departments. Secondly, starting tomorrow, you may have to Google this one, but starting tomorrow, there'll be new license plates called Beautify the Bluegrass. These will be to raise money for Beautify 65. At 10 o'clock tomorrow morning over at Warren County Clerk's Office, we, we will preview these, and they will go on sale. For every plate sold, $10 goes toward funding Beautify 65 from here on out. So, I'd like to thank Operation Pride and Johnny Webb for leading this charge, and the license plates are, look great. They're probably one of the best plates I've seen for Kentucky in a long, long time. So, encourage everybody to support that when those go out. But that, that starts tomorrow. And then, lastly, if you are in the room, want to make public comments not pertaining to an item on the agenda, please sign the register in the back corner of the room, and we'll take those up after our regular business. That's all I have, Mayor. Oh, I'm sorry. One more thing, there, there's a need for a closed session.
Pursuant to KRS 61-8110-1F, for discussions which might lead to the appointment, discipline, or dismissal of an individual employee without restricting the employee's right to a public hearing if requested. This exception shall not be interpreted to permit discussion of general personnel matters in secret. Action may follow.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin. Any discussion, none? Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. All right. Our first item is from Regular Meeting, November 4th, 2025. Approval of our minutes.
Thank you.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Discussion, none. Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2025-274.
Municipal Order approving the promotions of Shawn Hamilton to the position of Captain and Dustin Blair to the position of Engineer in the Fire Department.
Don't move.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
I'm going to ask Katie to give you an introduction to items one through six tonight.
Good evening, everyone. This particular position has become vacant due to a recent resignation, and it is prompting the promotions to come forth. I'm going to call on Chief Brooks to come forward to present those.
Tonight's a great night in our city. The two people that we're going to ask to stand that we've recommended for promotion to both engineer and captain, no doubt make us better. The resignation opened up an opportunity for promotion. These two have not only competed but completed in the promotional process. They stand credentialed and ready to go. The good thing is, is they continue to raise their hand to say, "Here I am, I send me." These responsibilities that they are moving into, we do not take lightly, and we're excited about both of them. I'm going to ask the engineer, the firefighter, the engineer, Dustin Blair, to stand. And then, the current engineer that we're recommending for captain, Shawn Hamilton, to please stand. Any questions?
Chief, recommendations. We'll start with Shawn. Do you have anyone with you tonight?
Little family.
Recognize y'all. And then, Dustin, do you have anyone with you tonight?
All right.
Well, it's a family affair tonight. Commissioners?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
We're going to make this official. Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Congratulations, Shawn. Congratulations, Dustin. Municipal Order Number 2025-275.
Municipal Order approving the promotion of Carolina NG to the position of Inspection Support Specialist in the Neighborhood and Community Services Department.
Don't move.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel, or, excuse me, Katie.
This is a vacancy due to a recent retirement of Dawn Riley, Rayleigh, I'm sorry, Dawn Riley. She's been with us for many years, been in a couple different departments, finance, NCS, and she deserves her opportunity to move on to another career if she chooses. So, we do have a vacancy to be filled, and I'd like to ask HR Manager Lori Gray to come forward.
Thank you. Good evening. So, I'm here to make the recommendation for the promotion of Carolina NG. She's here with us. If you want to stand, please. She is, this is for the position of Inspection Support Specialist in our Building Division of Neighborhood Community Services. We received 83 applications, and we did six interviews. So, we decided at the end of those interviews that we would want to make the recommendation for Carolina to take this position. She has been employed with the city since January of 2025 as an Office Associate in the Administrators, Administration Division of our Parks and Recreation Department. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Very much. Carolina, you have anyone with you?
I have my mom.
How are y'all? All right. We're going to make, please...
I may say, Carolina, honestly, I did not know citizens looked at our agendas, but on this agenda, they looked and they saw your name and told me, "Congratulations to the city for giving you the promotion." So, they sang your praises. So, congratulations.
All right. We're going to make it official, Carolina. Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Congratulations, Carolina. Municipal Order Number 2025-276.
Municipal Order approving the promotion of Callie Harold to the position of Property Custodian in the Police Department.
Don't move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill. Mrs. Schaller Ward.
This is a little bit unusual. We're actually preparing for future retirements, but because this is the property custodian evidence for police, it's vital that we get some folks in ahead of time before the retirements take place, so we've got some opportunity to train. There's also a requirement that they have to do an audit whenever someone leaves. So, again, we're trying to get this position filled early, and this is going to be one of two. So, this is the first one we have on the agenda, and I'd like to ask Chief Delaney to please come forward to present the promotion.
Mary, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity. This, we also have, this vacancy is created because of Pam Ritter. She's been with the police department for 27 years, and she's deciding to call it quits and go home, but she's served well in a couple different divisions over her 27 years. So, we'll miss Pam. The person I bring before you tonight is Callie Harold, if you'd like to stand. She's been with us since April of 2025, but she's been in the Records Division where she's excelled. She's from Barron County. She's currently attending Sky CTC. She's been an excellent employee since April. We interviewed internally and externally, and Callie stood out amongst everyone. So, she has been here a short time, but proved herself worthy and moving forward to get promoted. So, we're glad to have her.
Thank you, Chief.
Any questions?
Callie, wave to everybody. You here with anyone? All right. Want to wave to your family? All right. Callie, we're going to welcome you to the city, so. Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2025-277.
Municipal Order approving the transfer of Anthony Brown to the position of Heavy Equipment Operator II in the Parks and Recreation Department.
Don't move.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mrs. Schaller Ward.
This is, again, a recent resignation has opened up this opportunity for a transfer within the Parks Department. I'd like HR Manager Tiara Britt to come forward, please, and present this.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. We would like to make a recommendation for Heavy Equipment Operator II. This position, as it states, responsible a lot for operation of the heavy equipment. We haven't had this position filled in a while, so we were kind of in a hurry. This gentleman that we'd like to recommend is Anthony Brown. He's not here with us this evening, but he is watching at home. He started with us back in 2023 as a seasonal employee, came back in '24, and then we promoted him into a full-time position. But he has all of the mechanics and everything that we need for this position, and we'd love to get him started. So, let me know if you have questions.
Thank you, Tiara. All right. This is a nice promotion for Anthony Brown, and we'll go ahead with roll call.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Congratulations to Anthony. Municipal Order Number 2025-278.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of Jamie Holton to the position of Communications Dispatcher Supervisor in the Police Department.
Don't move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill. Mrs. Schaller Ward.
Again, this is a recent opening that we had in our Communications Supervisor position, so I'd like HR Manager Lori Gray to come forward to present this recommendation.
Again, so, I am here to recommend the appointment of Jamie Holton to the Communications Dispatcher Supervisor position. Jamie is here. She'll stand. Okay. Jamie previously worked for the City of Bowling Green from December 2018 until January of 2025. Her job title when she left was Communications Dispatcher Supervisor. She left us and was currently, and is currently working as a Funeral Director Embalmer Apprentice at Cone Funeral Home. And so, we are eager to get her back, and so, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Very much, Lori. Amy, welcome back to the city. You have anyone with you? Little parents? All right. We're going to make this official. Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Welcome back, Jamie. Municipal Order Number 2025-279.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of James Johnston to the position of Firefighter in the Fire Department.
Don't move.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mrs. Schaller Ward.
We have a unique opportunity since we've just started a new recruit class for the Fire Department. We are looking to fill a vacancy that was just created by the two promotions that we had first on the agenda. So, I'd like HR Manager Tiara Britt to please come forward and present this recommendation.
Good evening again. So, we would like to make the recommendation for firefighter to Mr. James Johnston, who is here with us this evening. If he would please stand. Just a little reminder, a recap about this process. 189 applications, 64 candidates initially interviewed, and then 25 made it to the second interview. So, Mr. James was one of them. He is a Grayson County High School grad. He already holds his EMT certification as well as an EMS license, and he's an avid active volunteer for 4H and has served as an FFA Sentinel. And he is a very hard worker coming from a background. He's worked at Matt Dillon Homes, B&amp;J Farms, and Hackley Farms. Let me know if you have questions.
Thank you, Tiara. James, good to have you here tonight.
I have my girlfriend, my father, my sister, and my mother.
Well done, James. All right. We're going to make this official. Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Congratulations, James. Okay. We're going to give a minute for everyone to refresh. Congratulations to everyone that was promoted, and welcome back to the city, and congratulations, and travel safe, be careful. Thank you, Deputy City Manager. Well done. Municipal Order Number 2025-280.
Municipal Order accepting the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky annual comprehensive financial report for the period ended June 30th, 2025, as prepared by the Department of Finance and audited by Cherry Beckert, LLP.
Don't move.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
We have completed our external audit for year ending June 30th, 2025, and I'd like to hand off to Aaron Beluver, Beluver, our Chief Financial Officer, to make a few comments, and also introduce Ms. Pamela Napier, who's up here with us tonight. Aaron?
Afternoon. As Jeff mentioned, this item is to approve the city's annual comprehensive financial report for the period ending June 30th, 20... 2025. Better? So, this report, it's essentially the city's full set of financial statements. It's a 200-page report with any number you'd like to know about the city's financial condition. This is prepared in-house by pretty much essentially every staff member in the Finance Department. But I do want to recognize Shawn Weeks. He's the Assistant CFO over the Revenue Divisions. He spends quite a bit of his time helping to make sure that this report is accurate and performed, or completed in a timely manner. So, I wanted to thank Shawn for his work throughout the year on this. Before I hand it over to Pamela Napier with the Audit Committee, I do want to very briefly just go over a couple of financial indicators on the city's, from the report. So, just really briefly, did want to point out that the city's overall net position increased to about $390 million for the period ending June 30th. This is about 20% or $70 million more than the previous fiscal year. So, this means that our assets outpaced our liabilities for that fiscal year, which is an indication of a strong financial position. Also, wanted to mention that our governmental fund balance has increased by about $2 million or 1%. This is also a good indicator. It shows that the city's financial condition is stable. We have a stable, a consistent amount of funding available for our projects to complete in the year. And finally, I did want to point out that we accepted or implemented one new accounting standard during the prior fiscal year 2025. This was to report compensated absences. We previously reported employees sick time earned, or vacation time earned but not sick. So, we have to now report sick leave earned but not used, and that increased our liabilities by about $6.5 million. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer, and if not, I'll hand it over to Pamela Napier with the Audit Committee.
Pamela?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I bring you greetings from the rest of the Audit Committee. Barry Pruitt is our Chair this year. Dan Myers is our Vice Chair. Jill Price and I are the community members, and Sue is the Commission Representative to the Audit Committee. And Aaron has already told you all the good news, but I will let you know that one of the things that we do every year, we, Bowling Green, is that we submit our audit to the Government Finance Officers Association, and they have, for the past, I don't know how many years, given us an award for excellence in accounting and finance report preparation. So, that's a good thing. Our audit was spotless. Cherry Beckert told us that there were no issues of any sort with anybody in the Finance Department, no issues with the internal auditor. They were very complimentary, and the, it was turned around just as fast as you can expect any audit to be turned around. But I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. Otherwise, you should be very proud to know that Bowling Green is in great hands.
Pamela, thank you so much. To each and every board member that has served, I know y'all served without any compensation whatsoever, but it's integral and vital to have smart people that are caring and concerned and want to show the financials to the community and the GFO, GFAO credibility of the, I think it's, Aaron, how many years has it been?
Each year since 2005, and then we had one blip, and there were several years before it. So, we're in the 30s.
That's incredible.
Thirty years plus.
Well, we're proud of our team, and we're proud of our board that serves as well. Thank you very much.
Makes it easy to pay your property taxes, knowing that they're being well-cared-for. But thank you very much.
I just want to thank the entire Audit Committee. Your volunteers, that you're helping us, you know, make sure that we have those citizens' eyes on how we're spending the money, and then just the staff. I know that tedious work of making sure we have every, you know, I dotted, every T crossed, it's incredibly important. I know probably when you're doing it, it's like, is anyone even going to read it? But what I see it as is, this is our foundation of trust with our community, and we really couldn't do any of the exciting things that we're announcing if you all don't do what you do. That makes it to where the community knows that they can trust that we're going to use their tax dollars wisely. So, I just want to make sure that we recognize you all for that foundational work you do that makes all other things possible. So, thank you all for your, just how amazing you are and making sure that we are being good stewards of our taxpayer dollars. So, thank you all.
Mayor, can I echo that? I know we thank Shawn Weeks, but I was on that Audit Committee last year, and I know Deborah works really, really hard at making sure everything's right. I don't know if she's in the room, but Deborah is always trying to make sure that we understand and when everything's going on. It could be, I know sometimes it's boring, but also with it boring, it's needed because we know that transparency, having that transparency for the community is needed as well. So, I appreciate everybody. Shawn, thanks for you guys, the GFO, but also thanks Deborah because she works hard at her job.
Appreciate you saying that, Carlos, because she does. And it's, it's not just about today and this great audit report and all of those, but every month, I, coming, coming behind you, Carlos, I, I kind of thought, oh, the Audit Committee, it just didn't sound, you know, that much fun, but it is. It's actually very interesting, surprisingly very interesting, and it's a bunch of people that really do care. And so, for that, I appreciate the mayor's appointment, and, and it's, it's just been a pleasure. But Deborah does work hard, and she brings new and innovative ways to take a look at things that we've been doing the same way for a long, long time, and, and recommends changes, and, and it's a pleasure working with you, Pamela.
Deborah Jenkins took one for the team. She moved her office up here to the third floor. She was over adjacent off of Jeff's office, and Katie has taken that because he's our Deputy Assistant City Manager for the city. Yes.
Mayor, one more thing. I'd like to remind the public that all of our audits, financial statements are out on our website. We go way, way back, I think, all the way back 20 years, maybe. Budgets are out there, but the audits, the popular financial reports are on there. The monthly reports are out there on our website anytime anyone wants to see something. So, all out there at BGKY.org.
Without any further comments, questions, roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Coordinates number BG 2025-30, first reading, non-binding.
Ordinance providing for issuance of industrial building revenue bonds. An ordinance of the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky authorizing the issuance of its industrial building revenue bond series 2025, WKU Student Life Foundation, Inc., and one or more series in an aggregate principal amount of $55 million, subject to a permitted upward adjustment of 10% and a downward adjustment of any amount, the proceeds of which shall be loaned to the WKU Student Life Foundation, Inc., to finance capital additions and improvements, and take other related action.
Don't move.
By Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
First of all, I'd like to recognize a couple of visitors tonight. Brad Howard is our, is the Chair of the WKU Student Life Foundation. He's here with us tonight, as well as Mark Rawlings with Baird. You met Mark last week with, or last meeting with the BGMU issue, but this is Student Life Foundation coming to the city requesting just the assistance with issuance of industrial revenue bonds. We're allowed to do this under state law for nonprofit educational institutions, and these would be basically just pass-through, no obligation whatsoever on the part of the city. If you'll turn to page four of the, the ordinance, paragraph three, basically really spells it out in all caps. Thank you, Mark. Bonds are not a debt of the city. So some people may think, oh, we're, we're helping Western out or WKU out with this, and, and we are in a way, but then we're not. We're not paying any debt on these bonds. These would all be serviced by the WKU Student Life Foundation. And so I'm going to ask Mark to come up and give you just a quick overview of this issue, and, and then I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel, Commission, Mayor. Yes, so as, as Mr. Mizel indicated, these are strictly a pass-through, no obligation of the city whatsoever. This is a, essentially a construction note with a final maturity of two years to allow for the repair and renovations to Normal and Regent's Hall. Two-year final maturity on these bonds. Expectations are that they will be taken out by long-term financing at the end of two years. Whether that is by the Student Life Foundation or the publicly announced P three that the university is exploring as a potential solution for its housing will be the ultimate takeout of these bonds. We do not expect them really to be fully outstanding for the full two years. I think the long-term takeout will occur before that, one way or the other. They are variable rate. As we sit here today, I think most everyone expects interest rates to start going down in the relatively near future. So we feel like on a variable rate basis, these are, they also have the flexibility to be paid off anytime, which was another of the big drivers for selection of variable rate debt. Happy to answer any questions about, about the financing to the extent that I'm able.
Just, just to be clear for the people watching out there, this does not obligate the City of Bowling Green in any way, shape, or form. If you all default or anything happens, we are not on the hook for this.
That is correct.
We'd want to make that a hundred percent clear.
Yes.
Because that's, you know, so.
Yes, ma'am.
And I would say probably the reason why we're here is because you could get a better favorable, more favorable rate with our.
No, ma'am, it doesn't even actually use the city's bond rating or anything like that. The fact of the matter is that the Student Life Foundation is itself not allowed to issue public debt, and so as a five oh one C three issuer, they have to use a conduit. So it was going to have to be you guys or Warren County or some other conduit, and you guys have always been such wonderful partners in allowing us to do these sorts of things. We approached you first, and here we are.
Will this, if for some reason the city needed to issue bonds for one of our projects, will this impact us at all? Okay, just wanted to verify. Thank you.
Good questions. We don't do this every day, and we are municipality, and we are great partners with WKU, and we want y'all to see our student life succeed, and we appreciate that we have a nonprofit that's putting a lot out there to rectify and to help the student life and to build dorms for our students. Please.
I would like to know, and I'm not sure if you're the one that needs to answer it, but what steps or procedures have been put in place to keep this from happening again?
I can speak to that process a little bit. I know that the Student Life Foundation and the university, generally speaking, have taken very concerted efforts to make sure that this construction process is done, is done using not only professionals that have national experience in procedures and provide additional third-party oversight to make sure that everything is being done correctly to make sure that this will not happen again.
Other questions?
Well, appreciate Mark, Brad Howard, for being here. Tad Purdue, don't let Western start the game until I get there, if you don't mind. Appreciate that. Wait for the mayor. All right, we'll, we'll take a roll call, please.
Eastley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigent.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. All right, thank you. Municipal order number twenty twenty-five dash two eighty-one.
Municipal Board approving the purchase of police dispatch consoles and desks for the Public Safety Training Center in the amount of two hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-two cents with Watson consoles through Omnia Partners Cooperative Purchasing Contract.
Don't move.
By Commissioner Perigent, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
This has been a good team effort with IT and our Dispatch Communications Division. Danita Weeks, our IT Director, Ann Ashley Remington, Communications Division Manager, worked collaboratively on this project. We'd like to purchase and install fourteen police dispatch consoles up in our new public training center up on Porter Pike. These would replicate the ones we have in our current dispatch center on nine, at nine eleven Kentucky. They did their research, looked at multiple vendors, reviewed several design options, but in the end found that Watson consoles of Poles, Poles Boe, Washington, our current vendor, was the best option, and we found a cooperative purchasing agreement out on Omnia Co-op, and we are recommending Watson for this purchase and installation at the police, at the Police and Fire Training Center. Fourteen consoles. I think Ashley, is Ashley here? Ashley's in the back. I think I saw Danita earlier, can answer any questions you have on this one.
A question, and I can't remember, does this make it the primary or the alternate?
This would make it secondary. We're in the process of wanting to move our backup location from Greenwood Fire Station to the Porter Pike Public Safety Training Center.
Witson Center, right?
The Witson Center. Thank you, Mayor Witson. Witson Training Center.
Thank you. Other questions?
We got to tour the facility a week or two ago and just decided to see, you know, what you're all going to be able to do in there to have that second site to make sure that you're always available to answer the call for our community. Just a really quick question, is this just a furniture piece or is this also part of the technology? And is it something that will be able to be upgraded easily, or will it be something that, you know, eventually we'll need to replace?
I think it's, it's.
Everything and all, one altogether, but Ashley, come on up.
This will also be used for training, training new dispatchers that will be much like what they'd be using at Kentucky Street.
That's correct. Yeah, these are the actual desks, and we've outfitted them with all of the technical capabilities that they need as far as like ports, data ports, that sort of thing. So there should not be any upgrades needed, and they are under warranty. We do have them at headquarters now. They're very reliable. We've put them through the wringer and had no issues.
Much.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Roll call, please.
Eastley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigent.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number twenty twenty-five dash two eighty-two.
Municipal Board approving and accepting bid number twenty twenty-six fourteen for Circus Square Park Sprayground Reconstruction from Spear Aquatics LLC doing business as Landmark Aquatic in the total amount of six hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight dollars.
Don't move.
Okay. By Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Bailey, Mr. Mizel.
This was a capital project you all approved in the FY twenty-six budget to renovate Circus Square Park's fountain. It's hard to believe, but that fountain will soon be twenty years old, and it does not perform like it performed in its first, first year with the dancing fountains and the, the lights, and we've had a lot of upkeep and maintenance on it, and at times it's been down, as you know, during the summer. And so Brent Belcher, I'd like to thank him for working on this, but we went out for bid. We did receive just one proposal, but we think it's a good one. Landmark Aquatic out of Rochedale, Indiana is proposing a renovation to do it for six hundred and forty-seven thousand. This is within budget, and we also are going to do a five-year service agreement for ninety-two hundred dollars a year. This, this company's worked for several cities, Lexington, Madison, Indiana, with, with various water parks, and we feel comfortable going with, with Landmark Aquatic. So Brent Belcher's here can answer any of your questions on this project, but hoping to get started on this fairly soon.
Unnecessarily a question, but I'm glad we are updating this. When you talk about twenty years, I can't believe that every one of my daughters have went over there. And why it's important is because there's a lot of kids who can't go to the park or the swimming pool, and having it to go out there on a hot day, and the grandparents, in my case, my, my mother and my aunt would take my twenty-five, who would be twenty-six year old daughter over there. I'd take my twenty-one year old daughter over there, my eighteen year old daughter over there, and my fifteen to be sixteen year old daughter over there when they didn't have money, just so that they can get wet, you know, just to have a good time. So I'm glad we're actually updating it after a twenty-year period.
Also really grateful. I had a couple of calls this summer when it went down on our hottest days, and just heartbreaking for those families really seeking a place for their, be able to cool off their small ones. So I'm really grateful that we're able to make this reliable and fix it for our community. Do you, you said there's going to be a couple of upgrades, like what can we expect in terms of what the fountain will get to do when we get all these things put in place?
I think the most notably, most notable aspect will be the dancing fountain. We'll be bringing that back. That'll be the first part, and we hope to add some lights to it, some, some, that'll be a new feature that we've really not been able to use for quite some time. So, yeah, that'd be the exciting part. And as far as timelines, just to share everyone, we'll get through the Christmas holidays. They may actually start some work in the pump room only, so we'll get through the holidays, and then once the new year comes around, you'll see some more site work eventually as it leads into spring and summer, of course, so.
It'll be open for the summer?
That's definitely our goal. That's why we're sitting here in, in November with this project now, so we can get started and try to get it done in time, so.
Thanks, Brent. Other questions? Roll call, please.
Eastley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigent.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number twenty twenty-five dash two eighty-three.
Municipal Board authorizing and accepting bid number twenty twenty-six twenty-five for Bowling Green Riverfront Park Phase One from Scott &amp; Murphy, Inc., in an amount not to exceed four million, three hundred, five thousand, seven hundred, sixty-nine dollars.
Don't move.
Second.
By Commissioner Perigent, second by Commissioner Brown, Mr. Mizel.
This is a big night, and I firmly, firmly believe that we are about to begin, begin the most significant multi-year project that has ever been planned in the history of the city. And this is going to, this is going to forever change the quality of life, future economic development of both sides of the river, for our city, for our residents here in the city and county, and, and the visitors that come here. And it all starts with your approval of this item here tonight with phase-one construction of a riverfront park. And I've got some thank yous I'd like to make for getting us to this point. Just go ahead and call him Captain Childers. Where is he? He, he has, he has pushed this thing every, every day, every week, every month since the beginning. His co-pilots, Brent Belcher, where's Brent? Belcher's been, been there, right there, you know, pushing it too. Nick Cook has also helped with the grants and all of the logistics of stuff. And then would just like to thank MKSK, our firm that provided our design and our construction drawings to get us to this point. So I'll let Brent come up if he wants to make any other comments, but tonight's a big night. This kicks us off with phase-one construction, and we had two bids, and we, one from Scotty's and one from Scott &amp; Murphy, and we are recommending that we go with Scott &amp; Murphy. And the amount for phase one we're looking at is roughly four point three million dollars. We do have the funding ready and set to go, and we're ready to get started with this thing.
Brent, can you talk to a little? Talking about it for years. Jeff's right. This is a, a big day. I've stood before you all in this room and in other rooms, talking about the impact of what this park means, what this park's going to mean to the community. I've talked to the community about it. This is a project we have talked and talked and talked. It's time to do something, and this is that big step into doing something to really start the construction, to start the progress, to show the community that this is real, this is going to happen. And then, you know, we call it phase one. You don't have a phase one unless you have a phase two or phase three, phase four, so that, those are all other phases that we're working on. But right now, this one is the original, if you recall, federal grant that we received from the National Park Service. That grant was a, we received preliminary award in February of twenty twenty is when we got our preliminary award, and then we got our full release years later. There was a long time waiting on that, a long time to get to this point, but this is also, we've done this, I believe, project in the right way. If you go back to the master planning, the public input, the time that we spent listening to people, talking to people, what do you really want out of this? If we're going to put this much time and energy and, and resources into a project, it should be what the community desires. And so this is all the culmination of that. This is, I tell people all the time, this is a citywide project. Public Works, every department, parks, police, fire, HR, everybody has had a piece of this project. I just, the one that talks about it all the time. But now Scott &amp; Murphy, if you all accept our recommendation, will be the firm selected to start the construction for phase one. So what we're looking at is starting construction probably in December. Completion time, early summer, summer of twenty twenty-six, weather-dependent, spring is a, is a great time to build a boat ramp in a river. So luckily, we timed it out, so most of our construction's going to be in the springtime, so it's going to be perfect. From there, phase two should go to bid sometime this spring with the goal of phase one ending construction, phase two starting construction. That's what we've, we set out to do years ago, and now we're at that point in the timeline where we can make those a reality. Phase three is still in the design process. That one is a very complicated phase three, if you'll remember, is the whitewater portion in the river. That is the most complicated piece of this whole pie of really trying to figure out how to reroute a natural water source for recreational purposes. So our design team is working on that. We're still a couple of years out from that, and we're working on phase four of how do we get the funding and the money for phase four to bring that to a reality and really culminate with the, what we, what I would see at the end of those four phases as, as kind of the completion of Riverfront Park in the next several years. So phase one is the starting point, includes the new boat ramp underneath the pedestrian bridge, includes the new, there's some rock gardens and some small trails, some seating areas, but this is really laying the foundation. It's setting the footprint for what Riverfront Park is meant to be. This park is meant to be different and unique. You all have seen the renderings. Probably after the holidays, I'll start releasing the phase-two renderings and the videos to start marketing that. But this is going to be unlike any other park we have ever built or any other park you have seen built in this part of the world. That's the level of park that we're talking about here, and we're trying to hold on to that. We're trying to do that. We are truly trying to build a regional destination park where people tell their friends, you've got to go to Bowling Green to see what they did. This is something special and unique, and it doesn't get there easily, and there's a whole team at the city working on this to bring this to a reality. So with that, I will entertain any questions, anything that you all want to know about Riverfront Park Phase One. Did you leave, are they building like the boat ramp, the picnic grove, the rock trail in Meadow, a small event lawn, bench swings and sun benches for the Barren River outlook just in phase one? Yes, that's all phase one. And that's supposed to be completed next year? Mm-hmm, next spring, next summer. Well, just from Bowling Green, from a perspective, this is going to be like a great change to our riverfront. We know that it's going to also bring up tourism. That's the main thing. And you guys, I think you said like Nick Cook and everybody being able to go out for those grants, that's helpful. So I appreciate everything you guys are doing. This is bringing something that is going to be a tourist attraction long after we're gone, and I'm talking about everybody that's in this. Everybody in here, you're right. You're right. So thank you, guys. Yeah, thank you all. Thank you all for your continued support. This doesn't get here with, unless you all say this is the right direction we should go. We always have ideas. There's no shortage of ideas on our side, but it takes you all saying, you know what, this is the direction. You all setting that vision, you all setting that and supporting it every year, and we appreciate that. Anything else from the commission? I know you all got a lot of things to get to.
I think that river's been sitting there an awful long time, and a lot of people look at it and say, why don't we do something with that? And, and I had a long conversation with the mayor of Frankfurt, and he wants to jump on the bandwagon that we're on with, with Frankfurt, and they've got a river that really doesn't do a lot for them. So thank you so much for your tenacity in sticking with it and for collaborating with all the departments, and this is, I just want to be thirty years younger so I can really get the full use of it all, and, because I just think it's, it's going to be just outstanding, really, and it will bring a lot of people here. It'll bring a lot of people here to come and live, and not just come and recreate, but they'll, they'll be coming to that whitewater. But they'll, they'll be coming to that whitewater rafting and they'll be, they'll be looking around our town and they'll be saying, you know, "Looks like a pretty good place to..."
Place to be. Not every town's going to have this. Don't forget, my, one of my taglines, there are nine million people that live within a three-hour driving distance and the nearest whitewater park is four hours away. So we have, we have a marketable area here.
Is there a place on your website or the city's website where they can see renderings of Phase One? Or is that possible to get that out where?
Yeah, I'll get that out.
Folks that are out here can?
Yeah, I'll work with our PIO to get that out there. Our master plan's out there, but master plan is really from a much higher level. Doesn't have that level of detail in it. So I'll work on with PIO to get some information out.
That would be great. That would be great. Because I think people are, you know, they, I never have anybody that's saying, you know, "Don't do that. Don't, don't, you know, make that river something because everybody's excited about it." So if we give them a visual, it'd be great. Thank you.
Just want to add my thanks. I'm just thrilled that we're, I mean, it just seemed like it was going to take forever. And to know that potentially, you know, we could be seeing next year, begin to enjoy that park, I'm just so excited for the community. Just thinking about a spot where we can, you know, leave the hustle and bustle of the city and then right in the heart of it, imagine, you know, the sound of the river and just walking in the grass and just hearing the, the leaves flow and just the walking and just rocking on those swings. I mean, I'm just so excited for our whole community, community to be able to enjoy the river in a way that we've never been able to before. Just so for our community, can you remind us the boundaries of Phase One? So you can, we can visualize what this footprint will look like and where it is?
Yes. So we are starting in the most visible location. So it is between the pedestrian bridge and the river street bridge. That is Phase One, but we are about 50 feet, 75 feet back from the river edge. So it's right there in the middle of the pedestrian bridge and river street. So very clear to see from the bypass or First Street, depending on how you call it, or if you're driving along river street, to see it right off to the left if you're heading out of town. The reason we're setting it back for Phase One, because you will get this question and I want everybody in here to know the answer to this question is because in Phase Three, whenever we do the whitewater park, we are going to reshape that whole bank of the river. And whenever we reshape that and we terrace it down and we give, make it an accessible path from the top to the bottom, we need to remove all that soil, all that debris, everything that's there. So we did not want to build our first phase right on top of all the things that we need to move. So we're anticipating building back to where this is. So in the beginning, they're going to go, "Well, why'd you build it all the way back here?" That's going to be the question. That's part of it. Because in Phase Three, that will be the riverfront edge. This is the front porch of the park. As you're sitting on those benches, you're sitting on the stoops, you're sitting on those swings, looking down at the river in a few years. Thank you.
Thank you, Brent. All right. Let's get this party rolling. Roll call.
Easely Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2025-284.
Municipal order authorizing a change order to the contract with QK4, Inc. for professional services for this Scottsville Road multi-use path in the amount of $161,026 for a total project cost of $381,522.
Moved. Second.
By Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
Take a deep breath. This is a good change order. Okay? We got more money. Remember, we got additional money last meeting that you all approved. Municipal order 2025-243 from the CRP grant, $592,000. This is actually ups the contract by 161,000, I'm sorry. And this is for the, the paths out along Scottsville Road that will run from the mall, I think, out to Three Springs Road, about a mile stretch there, multi-use path. And this will help get us the rest of the right-of-way funding that we need to get this project underway. So Andy Sousa's here, Public Works Director, can answer any of your questions on this. He's walked it, knows, knows it well, and I recommend your approval.
Andy, thanks for...
I just want to, again, thank you all for doing this project. I see more and more families walking in the middle of Scottsville Road, walking alongside of Scottsville, crossing Scottsville Road. And I know we've had, you know, some pedestrian deaths on Scottsville Road. And so anything we're doing to help, you know, make that safe for families to walk to where they need to go, just working with a lot of families, just even trying to purchase the cheapest car they can. Monthly, you know, rates for really cheap cars are more than rent. I mean, it's incredible how expensive cars are becoming and out of reach for a lot of families. And so anytime we can make our pedestrian facilities more accessible to our grocery stores and our places of work and just making it safe, I'm just really grateful for you all pursuing these additional grant funds to make it possible and safer for our community. So thank you all.
Other questions? Roll call, please.
Easely Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2025-285.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 202613 for fiscal year 2026 sidewalk rehabilitation from Baker Contracting LLC in an amount not to exceed $400,000.
Moved. Second.
Perigin, second by Commissioner Bailey, Mr. Mizel.
Last several years, we have allocated $400,000 in our capital improvement budget for sidewalk replacement. Before we deny, we've selected an area to do that for FY '26. It's, it's in the zones 2B and 2C. This one is out along Three Springs Road, I believe. And $400,000 budget, we went out for bid, bid it based on per-unit price. And in your memo, you'll see how those came in based on unit price and we are recommending Baker Contracting. What will happen is they'll either stop at $400,000 or keep going until that last, the way they explained, contract will be paid at their bid unit price for their actual amount of work completed until all sidewalk deficiencies in the project area are addressed or the total project budget of $400,000 is expended, whichever occurs first. So recommending Baker Contracting to do this work. And we're looking at 460 linear feet of curb and gutter with turned-down sidewalk. And this is actually, I've got this one mixed up with another one. This is reconstruction of three entrances along 12th Avenue and some along the 1100 block of Center Street. So it's not Three Springs. That's another one. So map is in your packet. You can take a look at the zone. Andy's here, if you have any questions.
Appreciate you because it seems like the Zone 2B and Zone 2C, sometimes we, we don't always get to it when we can. But this time we are because I'm looking on that, that streets. There's going to be a little bit of Pearl Street, Church Avenue, Jackson Street, Woodford Avenue, Fair Street, Stubborn Street, Clay Street. I'm not sure if Adam Street is on there, but being able to get to these streets, I know it's important for those families. So I appreciate you guys doing that.
Also really grateful. I know a lot of our residents in this area use the motorized wheelchairs to get where they're going and, and talk to me a lot about how, you know, a lot of the issues around these sidewalks makes it really hard for them to get where they're going safely. And just a lot of other folks who don't have cars that are just walking everywhere they need to go in these neighborhoods. So I'm really grateful that we are fixing these sidewalks and making sure that they're safe. Do these also, do we go through and make sure that they're meeting the standards for, make sure it's accessible for everyone? Is that part of what we do with this rehab?
Here, City Manager. So yes, this, we were in the zone last year. Generally, it's $200,000 allotted for sidewalk repair. In this budget, an additional $200,000 was allotted for some curb gutter repairs that'll let us go after some entrances, some other things to ensure that the ADA compliance is there. So we previously did all the precision concrete cutting. So we've, we've went in, we've done the, the cheap portion of it where we could grind down any trip hazard. So this will be ensuring ADA compliance with the sidewalk, with the curb, with some of the entrances along 12th Street and Center Street where some of the curb returns make it not so pedestrian-friendly, just to make it more walkable.
Well, so much.
Daniel Coulter, Public Works Planner. Sorry, Daniel, I missed you. So thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Thank you, Andy. Roll call, please.
Easely Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2025-285.
286.
Sorry.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 202618 for Wheatstone Avenue sidewalk from Baker Contracting LLC in an amount not to exceed $83,610.50.
Move. Second.
By Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Easely Brown, Mr. Mizel.
This one is just off Three Springs Road. This is a five-foot of sidewalk on Wheatstone Avenue to connect pedestrian traffic and safety to Three Springs Road. New sidewalk, ADA compliant ramps at designated locations. We went out for bid, got several bids on this one. Again, we are electing to go with the lowest bid, Baker Contracting. It was an actual evaluation, evaluated bid, low bid criteria and awarding, like to award this to Baker Contracting LLC. And I believe this one is for 80-some thousand dollars. And again, Public Works staff is here can answer any questions on this one.
It's time?
Easely Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2025-287.
Municipal order authorizing a contract for Turkey Run Basin Expansion from Infinity Pipeline, Inc. through Soul Source in the total amount of $198,800.
Moved.
By Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Perigin, Mr. Mizel.
This was one of the many flooded areas for the April 2025 storms that we needed to make some, do some work on. And we found out that Warren County Water District was already working out here in this area and using particular contractors. But we, we, we went in and we want to enlarge a stormwater basin flood mitigation project at 200 block of Turkey Run Drive and along the CSX rail line. This was heavily flooded during the April storms on Turkey Run Drive and Red Clover Avenue. I'd like to thank Matt for looking at this one. They've come up with a retrofit, retrofit-type project that will expand the capacity of that basin and to help that neighborhood. And as I mentioned, Warren County Water District was already using Infinity Pipeline, Inc. to do some work out there. So we are piggybacking on that contract and using, this is a Soul Source, to do all this work at the same time where we don't have to go back in and do all the mess again. So there's a map in your packets and Matt's here can answer any questions on this one.
Questions at this time?
I'm so grateful, as always, that you all are, you know, addressing these issues for our community. I know the pictures that came in from that neighborhood after those spring floods was just devastating for those families. So for that neighborhood, I know they're excited that you all are getting in there and figuring out some solutions. So can you explain for the neighborhood of what you all are doing and what you think that the positive impacts will be?
Absolutely. So this is a portion of the city that's already considered a special drainage area. We have enhanced design principles there that are, I think, more about 2019, 2020 is when we instituted those that increase the size of these kinds of retention basins. This basin's older than that. So what we're doing, we can't quite make it as big as we would. We're confined by where the homes are now. But we're going back to a basin that existed from before our enhanced standard and bringing it as close as we can to our modern standard. This will increase the capacity for stormwater runoff in that basin. So the more water we can keep back there, the less that they're going to find in their, in their yards and of course, in their homes.
But you're just taking it deeper so it can hold more?
Wider, longer and deeper, yes.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. No further questions? Roll call, please.
Easely Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2025-288.
Municipal order authorizing an amendment of a Kentucky Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Funding Grant Award from the Kentucky Department for Local Government.
So moved.
Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner.
Hopefully you all remember the Whispering Hills Stormwater Project that we've been working on. It's still in design, I believe. We got a really nice grant for that under the CDBGDR money back a year or so ago, $1,322. I'd like to thank Jake Moore for bringing this to us. We are, would like to accept another $530,000 to put toward this project from more CDBGDR money to, to help that project further it along. There is zero match required on this one. And when this is all said and done, this is going to take a lot of properties out of the floodplain. It's going to be, the floodplain will be remapped by FEMA and there'll be less properties in that, in that floodplain. So I'd like to thank Jake's work on this grant. This would get us to a total of $1,852 to use for this project. So we're really excited about getting these additional funds. Recommend your approval. Jake's here can answer any of your questions on this one.
Jake, raise your hand, sir. Great to see you. Thank you. Well done. Bring another $500,000 to this project. Well done.
Jake, I want to echo that. But could you also tell us just a little bit how this grant is going to impact, like it's going to reduce the impact of the flooding in the future? And I appreciate everything that you guys are doing.
Certainly. Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor. First of all, this was, this money comes to us through Nick Cook simply asking for if, additional money, asking if there was any more left in the pot, and there is. Sometimes all you have to do is ask. The construction estimate came back a little higher than expected. So that, that was the genesis of our ask for more money. Essentially, the largest part of this project is the removal and replacement of the culvert under Whispering Springs Boulevard. I'm sure you all have heard that that kind of backs up during periods of heavy rainfall. That water just kind of pools and creates flooding issues. Part of this project is with the removal of that, of that structure, that's hopefully going to allow the water to flow through freely. It's not going to pound it. And that should shrink the floodplain itself. This project also entails just a full remapping of the Jennings Creek floodplain. Working with the team and engineers that are doing data collection right now. There is some FEMA correspondence required as part of this. Part of this new tranche of grant money includes an extension of our deadline to the end of 2027. So essentially, we're getting more money and more time to put this project together with the goal of removing several homes from the floodplain in this area that is prone to flooding. So it'll take a while, but it's a great project and we'll be helping folks in that neighborhood.
Thank you. And also Matt and Nick that's back there for everything you guys are doing.
Thank you all, everybody. I know the community will greatly benefit from this. Roll call, please.
Easely Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2025-289.
Municipal order authorizing acceptance of Federal Emergency Management Agency reimbursement funds related to the severe weather event on April 2nd, 2025, and further authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of agreement with the Commonwealth of Kentucky Department of Military Affairs Division of Emergency Management.
Move. Second.
Commissioner Perigin, second by Bailey, Mr. Mizel.
So this is the public assistance money that was approved for the April storms. And we'd like to pursue this and accept this public assistance money. Matt Powell's here, worked on this. And this would go toward reimbursing us for a lot of the infrastructure repairs that we've done thus far. Recommend your approval.
Very much. Questions? Roll call, please.
Easely Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2025-290.
Municipal order approving and authorizing out-of-town travel expenses for City Manager Jeff Mizel to attend the International City County Management Association, I needed to breathe, sorry, annual conference in Tampa, Florida.
So moved.
Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel, we thank you for going on this.
I'd like to thank you all for allowing me to get away for a few days. There were 5,200, some city managers from all over the world. There were some from Ukraine there, 18, I think, different countries around the world. Got to net, Katie was able to go too. We got to network with a lot of other city managers from other states and even countries. And it was a really, really good conference. Went to some interesting sessions on AI and this and that. So thank you for allowing me to get away for a couple of days.
Over Bowling Green, Kentucky.
They do. They do.
Nice.
Don't have to say Kentucky much anymore.
Roll call, please.
Easely Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance number BG 2025-26. Second reading binding.
Ordinance, many code of ordinances, ordinance repealing and revising Chapter 21, Public Infrastructure Rights of Way in Stormwater. 21 Public Infrastructure Rights of Way in Stormwater, subchapter 21-2 Stormwater Quality, related to the stormwater requirements of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordances.
Moved. Second.
Move by Commissioner, second by Commissioner Brown. This was a 5-0 after long hearings, multiple meetings, several public hearings, public meetings, and really understanding, and this will not be implemented again until 1 January of 2027, and that will be primarily a $4 fee that will go onto every utility to be determined, and how that utility fee will relay, but hopefully, we'll be able to mitigate that and get all that information out to the public, but there may be some discussion from Commissioners, and I'll open that up. Okay, no further discussion, roll call please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance number BG 2025-27, second reading binding.
Ordinance providing for issuance of water and sewer revenue bond anticipation notes, ordinance of the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, authorizing and providing for the issuance of City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, water and sewer revenue bond anticipation notes, Series 2025, for the purpose of financing the construction of additions, expansions, and improvements to its water and wastewater system.
Moved. Second.
Move by Commissioner, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. This is also a 5-0 at the last commission meeting, this is the storm utility fee that will go to our contractors, our builders, and to public property that is only...
No, this is the bond.
No, this is the bond, I'm sorry, for BGMU, scratch that. No further discussion, roll call please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance number BG 2025-28, second reading binding.
Ordinance relating to a budget amendment, ordinance approving amendment number one to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, annual operating budget for fiscal year 2026.
Moved. Second.
Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Paragon, 5-0 at the last meeting, any further discussion? None, roll call please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance number BG 2025-29, second reading binding.
Ordinance amending code of ordinances, ordinance repealing Chapter 7 Cable Communications of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordances.
Moved. Second.
Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown, this was 5-0 at the last meeting, Hillary did all the rewrite, thank you very much. No further discussion, roll call please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. It's time, we'll check for public comments, and our next scheduled meeting is December 2nd, 2025, however, we're going to go to closed session in just a minute.
Eric, can I acknowledge, we couldn't do it earlier, but the AKAs were actually in the House, well, we're in the City Commission chambers today, so I just want to acknowledge all the ladies that were actually here, we understand everything that you guys do for the Divine Nine, and I appreciate, and please forgive me, we couldn't do it until it was over, and it looks like everyone has left, but we appreciate you guys for coming.
Thank you for being here.
Oh, well, yeah, Capitol was here as well.